So, I need a motion to adjourn executive session.
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in the regular session. So now I need to add a motion, which would be, what, 2.1? I need a mo— so after deliberation, the board declines to grant a hearing regarding a student matter. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, so we have our recognition.
We do, we do, and the whole team here, not the whole team. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it off to Gail to do a description of what our recognition is, but what a commitment we have made to Teachers College and the reading and writing instructional model and time that we have spent traveling to New York City to get some training and go to the mountaintop, really. That's kind of what we do, we know that. I went on the initial visit when Lucy gave, I have a great picture of me and Lucy, like another big art.
Lucy Conkers.
Oh, gotcha. What is it? Sorry.
Totally gonna geek out for a little bit here.
Yeah, she's on board.
But, Gail, go ahead.
I, you know, I have to say it's such a privilege to work with so many dedicated professionals here in this district and there are professional development days that, as you are well aware of, are built into the calendar. So we do provide professional development for our teachers on professional development days and those are days where the kids are off for school and the teachers stay and we bring in some experts in the field. However, sometimes that's just not enough. Sometimes there are people who have just such a thirst for learning and desire to know more that they volunteer their Saturdays and they go into New York City, Columbia University hosts twice a year what's called the Teachers Reunion and that's at Teachers College, Columbia University and it's got the most renowned experts in the field for reading and writing workshop. And in the beginning, when we first adopted workshop, I think we filled two buses, filled with teachers and paraprofessionals and we would all go to TC on Saturday and it was like summer camp for teachers. And then after several weeks, I think we're in our sixth year now of workshop, it's kind of ebbed and flowed a little bit. We run the buses occasionally, but this year, you know, after seven years, I thought, well, you know, I'm not even gonna post anything, I don't think anybody'd be interested, but of course, our teachers said, gee, would you run a bus again because we'd love to go to the TC reunion in October? And a group of 12 of you, 12 of you went. I had a—
Fourteen, I think.
Fourteen. And I think had quite tight accommodations because we got a van instead of a bus, but went in for a full day at Teachers College and really had some great experiences, I think, but above all else, I just think it's incredible that all of them come to the table every day ready to learn more and more beyond what we give. So I just wanted to acknowledge each and every one of you and thank you. If you wouldn't mind saying your name and where you're teaching now and why you decided to go this year. So, you wanna start?
I'm Alicia Dunbar. I'm teaching kindergarten this year at Jeffrey and I just thought it would be refreshing to get some new information being in a new building, in a new grade and Peter Reynolds was the keynote speaker and I just think he's amazing, so I, I thought it'd be a good use of my time. Thank you.
Hi, Diane. I am at Jeffrey School, teaching second grade this year, loving every minute of it. I have a great team, we work really well together, a lot of collaboration and I too was really interested because we read a lot of Peter Reynolds books, especially in our launch unit and throughout the year. So I was really excited to hear him speak and talk about how he comes about his writing and to kind of carry that back to the kids in the classroom too, who we saw and what we learned.
And I'm Lisa Caldwell, I'm a literacy coach in the district and I think it's my job to go, but no.
Not at all.
No, kidding. But it's, we hadn't gone in a couple of years and again, the keynote was wonderful and working in middle school now as a coach, they were offering some workshops for middle school readers and writers, so I took advantage of that and I'm actually using what I've learned there in my coaching right now. So it's really relevant, it's a wonderful thing and I just want to say too, that not all of us could be here and most elementary teachers wanted to go and they had various obligations, but we're a pretty dedicated crew.
Hi, I'm Peggy Bell. I'm a third grade teacher at Ryerson and I would just like to thank you for providing the bus. I've probably been going every October and March for a long time and making a long trek and paying for the parking in New York City and the train, so to have the bus, I really very much appreciate it. And to be able to go there, it's like going, it's college for teachers all over again. You pick courses that you want to attend, speakers that you want to hear to come back. It's invigorating in the classroom to bring that back to your team, new books, new ways of teaching, it's, it's just a wonderful opportunity for us and thank you for allowing us in providing the transportation. It's wonderful to work in a district where this is so supported, so thank you.
Peggy, have you missed any that we posted?
Uh, I think I've missed two.
I, I—
Since we've instituted—
Every time I've gone, Peggy's sitting right there. I'm like, okay. And Erin.
I'm Erin Chester and I'm the literacy coach too at Jeffrey and Ryerson and, you know, what everybody else said, the new learning and sometimes the learning that kind of confirms what we're doing as well, but I think the opportunity to go together on a bus because anybody that's around teachers, they don't ever stop talking about teaching. You can ask my husband that and he could vouch for that. He's not a teacher. I think that it's just as exciting learning from each other and being together and, you know, you get your list of all your workshops and sometimes you're on the floor, which is, you know, sometimes difficult to get off after an hour, but you, you know, we, we had all the, you know, we were in the dark on the bus and we're passing around the list and we're looking and it's like, okay, if you go here, I'll go here and then we'll touch base and we'll talk about that and you go there, well, I'll do that and, but, and I know we ended up getting some resources that came out of that workshop, so it was just, it was a lot of fun and it was, it's always great learning, so.
It's an incredibly invigorating group to be with. There's thousands of teachers there packing Columbia from all different states.
Next take me a seat next to you.
So much coming.
You should've come on the bus.
I will next time. We actually have a van.
Yeah.
It was a very luxurious van.
It was, it was very luxurious.
And actually, I'm gonna just tell a funny story because at first, when Gail said she was gonna get the van, I was like—
She was thinking she had the van.
I went to, I went to Renee Pardo and I'm like, ooh, look at the van and she's like, do you have to drive the van? And I'm like, oh, I don't think so. I mean, I don't know.
I was a little shocked, but it's not that.
Then I told my husband and he, he said the same thing, are you driving that van? I was like, yeah, am I driving the van? Please God, tell me no.
Every teacher here thinks I'm driving the van.
I mean, I would've, but I'm not sure. Well, I'm able to pick my course though.
Two things, I just noticed. Number one, four of the five of you all have dairy deep roots from Ryerson.
Oh, that's true.
Yes, four of the five, not you Lisa, didn't you? And I think three or more, do you remember the hot, steamy week in the summer of 2012 when we did our crash course in workshop? And you volunteered to come in in the summer for five days not getting paid? Remember those days? Think of where we are now.
I think it was about 40 teachers at that.
Forty teachers came in, so for board members that haven't been around, summer of 2012, we started our work in Reader's Writers Workshop, 40 teachers volunteered their week in the summer and it was hot and it was nice outside and you were in this room with no exterior windows for a whole week. Yeah, many of you were, were a part of that, yeah.
And I had just gotten a puppy the Sunday before. Yes, I know, and I had to hire a baby sitter for my puppy.
And I will say that I still use the mentor, as a mentor text for my teachers as a literacy coach, the, the work that Sloan did in your classroom on plants and I could see, I mean, we just pulled it out the other day at one of my meetings and we still use it as a mentor text for, you know, what, what a finished product could look like and how it's about process. We still use it and she's a freshman now, but she was in your class. Yes, so.
Well, if, if your passion for this was not illustrated by you taking Saturday and going in a van to Teachers College, coming in on a snow day to tell us about it, we gotta—
They were doing a courtyard all day.
So we are grateful that you came to share with us your experience. Clearly, an ounce of this passion and excitement trickles into your classrooms. Our kids are really lucky for it, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna give Erin a shout out. She's being honored as Teacher of the Year tomorrow night.
I'm sure she'll dress up a little bit.
All the reasons I'm not using, I would say we appreciate, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all, very much. Thank you.
Are we dismissed?
You are. The best is yet to come, Lisa.
Stuff, I don't know why you would want to.
So I'm in with one, public participation. The board welcomes public comment at our meetings. When speaking, please state your name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes in order to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity. Please only speak on one topic per public comment session. Allow everyone who'd like to speak an opportunity. The board's happy to hear from our community. It should not be expected, however, that the board respond. The superintendent may respond, but he requests that individuals submit the question writing and invite the individual to meet with outside board meetings. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? I'm gonna get better at that, Liz, we Tuesday, we have it memorized. All right, we do not have a student representative report. It is exams.
It's exams and I know Eric had his first hockey practice today and Jackie made a nice hockey too, so.
It's exams, they did have all day to study, but I—
It's a study.
And it's a study, they didn't have school.
They made up every excuse for it.
That's right. It's so funny.
Okay, so superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I'd like to welcome Attorney Tom Muni to the table here. Yeah, come on up. So, back in the summer of 2018, Tom did a retreat with six percent of board members, Board Member Role and Responsibilities. We covered that for the better part of, I think, the entire morning up until lunchtime and we have a couple of new board members who have joined us since the last meeting, Kathy and Diane, so we thought it'd be a good opportunity to have Attorney Muni facilitate a workshop on roles responsibilities and also on communication among board members, outside of the board, within the board and so forth, social media and so forth, so.
Just to add to that, for Diane and Kathy, the board, as we were developing our goals for the year, reaffirming the roles and responsibilities, our code of conduct that is in our bylaws and really taking a look at how to be better board members all the way around is, is one of our goals for the year. So I thought it would be a good idea at the very beginning of our year after the election to, to get a crash course. So thank you again on a snow day for you two, Mr. Muni, for coming and sharing your expertise with us.
I'm gonna grab a bottle of water. Anybody need any?
Here, you can have one.
Are you sure? Anybody else? Okay.
I'm Tom, I have two.
You got a bunch? Yeah, okay. Grab a couple then. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have stuff you want me to pass out?
No, it's—
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I was like so mesmerized by the water. Water does that.
Well, it's my pleasure to see some of you again and to meet the new board members and I just wanted to emphasize that our entire discussion is on these two pieces of paper, which means that this is more in the nature of a conversation about board member roles and responsibilities as opposed to a lecture. And I'm, I look forward to your questions and your comments as we go through some of this information, but it's a, it's an interesting dynamic to be a board member because you're here serving your community because you care deeply about what goes on for the children in the Madison Public Schools, but it's not your job to get involved. It's your job to exercise your oversight and to make policy decisions to guide the district, but when we get into the operational issues, and that'll be really the focus of the conversation tonight, the operational issues are delegated to the administration in the day-to-day operation of the Madison Public Schools. And what I, I meet with boards frequently on this, just my background is that I'm a lawyer, but I wanted to be a teacher, but I majored in German and I was unemployable, so I went to law school, never having met a lawyer in my life. My torts professor was the first lawyer I ever saw in the flat. So, but for over 30 years, I have taught a school at the University of Connecticut, but my day job, because that's like $1,500 a year and you can't really raise a family on $1,500 a year, so my, my day job is to represent school districts and I've done that for 43 years, although you wouldn't know it to look at me.
That's right.
But the question I usually ask to start is, did anyone here go to middle school? And you all say yes.
Yeah.
And the reason why I ask is so that you all remember the three branches of government, right? And so what are you? As a Board of Education, what branch of government are you? And I'm not gonna pick on the new board members.
Legislative.
You're, you're the legislative and how are you the legislative branch?
We oversee and lead policy.
So policy is essentially the statutory authority. You adopt the rules to regulate the operation of the school district, so that is a fundamental responsibility. And what is another responsibility of Congress and a responsibility, in addition to passing the laws, that they have a lot of trouble doing?
Budget?
Adopting a budget, right. And so that's viewed as a legislative responsibility as well. And, and that's so important because by adopting a budget, you're allocating resources, you're making decisions in terms of how this district is gonna run by deciding you're gonna spend money here and you're not gonna spend money there. So that's another of your legislative responsibilities. What are the other branches?
Judicial.
Judicial. What is your responsibilities, if any, as judges?
We sometimes are called upon to be at hearings.
Yes.
Expulsion hearings, our grievance proceedings.
Those are two examples and in this little outline I have at the bottom of the page, I have impartial judge and, and you see that there are four statutory citations. The General Assembly has delegated to you as board members a judicial responsibility when it comes to student expulsions, as Katie just mentioned, school accommodations, that is when a child says, I am eligible to attend the Madison Public Schools and the superintendent says, no, you're not, you don't live here, would typically be, that would actually only, the only reason would be it's, you're either a resident of Madison or you're not. And you get into some interesting questions. I had a case where we proved mathematically that the child was in our district only 45% of the time and in the other district, 55% of the time. And at the risk of disappointing you, I do want to confess, I lose cases from time to time. That was one I lost because the hearing officer said, no, come on. Forty-five percent of the time, that's a bona fide residence and the student could live in either place or could attend school in either place, but that's a judicial responsibility. And in that case, as you can hear as well, in both expulsions and accommodation hearings, you can delegate that responsibility to a hearing officer. That would be up to you. I know you don't delegate your responsibilities in expulsions, because I've been in this room, on those matters, but those are two judicial responsibilities. The worst experience I had, and when we met a couple, almost two years ago now, I guess, I've mentioned this because I always do, but you may have forgotten, the worst thing that happened to me was about 40 years ago and that's when the high school principal in a particular town was proposed for non-renewal and he invited 400 of his closest friends to the high school auditorium for the hearing and the very first thing, the lawyers for the principal, that non-renewal, by the way, I don't want to get overly technical, that's, he's probationary, it's within the first four years of employment, he really, but he, the statute provides, provided them and provides again for a hearing. And so he invoked his right at this hearing and the very first thing was the lawyers put the board members on the stand and the questions were, isn't it true, any good cross-examination question begins with, isn't it true, that you said to Sally Smith that you're gonna get rid of my client? And there were three board members who were out there talking about it and all of them were called to account and in front of 400 people, we saw the whole case crumble because the board in that circumstance is supposed to be an impartial judge, so, and these board members weren't. And I know that one of the issues that comes up now is, so, anyway, I, I have scenarios, we went through some scenarios last time and you may remember, the headline was Madison teacher arrested for running a meth lab. And, you know, so you wanna know what's going on and so you ask Tom, you know, what's going on with this teacher? And Tom says, I can't talk to you about it. And I'm raising that scenario simply to remind you that, and Tom's not being proprietary, he's being, he's being protective because you need to stay out of it until you're, it's your time to get involved and that's why superintendents can't be, it would, a termination case can be a hundred thousand dollar adventure. And superintendents would love to get you in the room in executive session and say, this is what happened. Are you with me or against me? And, and superintendents can't do that. They have to make these decisions on their own. Now, in rare cases, the superintendent will talk to the chair or another board member as a thought partner, but then that person can't participate in the deliberations. So there's this strict separation and so if ever you're in a circumstance where you wonder what's going on and Tom says, no, it's really because it's important to protect your responsibility there. So that's tenure hearings, but we also have transportation hearings and these are some of the most exciting hearings because people want the bus stop moved from there to here and it's a great country, America, where you can actually have a hearing and go to a state appeal on whether the bus stop is there or here because the statutory authority is that the Board of Ed shall provide school accommodations through reasonable transportation or otherwise. And so through that phrase, reasonable transportation, the, the parents will say, well, I'm being denied school accommodations just as much as if you told me I can't attend the Madison Public Schools, so I have a right to a hearing. And again, this is the kind of thing that could be all on social media, you know, and where, where, you know, where are you with that? If you read about this, by the way, I don't mean to be overly critical, these hearings are important, they, they protect people. I remember doing one hearing, a transportation hearing, a school bus hearing, and we did a visit, you know, to the bus stop, hearing officer and me and someone else, maybe the parent. And anyway, I was scared out of my mind that I was gonna get run over, so, you know, all these decisions are not always perfect and that's why we have hearings to, to make good decisions and when bad decisions are made, to review them. But that's an example. So you're on social media, so is it a conflict of interest? I'll give you two hypotheticals and see if they're any different. Your child is attending the high school and there's a spectacular food fight in the cafeteria and your child comes home and says, oh my God, you won't believe it, Joe Blow took this hot dog and he threw it across the room and it hit the teacher and this and that. Joe Blow's brought up for expulsion. Do you have a conflict of interest or can you be an impartial judge? You've already heard all about Joe Blow's misconduct. Can you be an impartial? Let's vote. I can be an impartial judge. I'm modeling, by the way.
No.
Okay.
Can we say, depend on circumstances?
Right.
Depending on circumstances?
You know, that's what lawyers say all the time. In fact, my favorite legal answer is, it depends. And you're absolutely right, but, but the question was can? So I'll just, so you, it's possible. It does, it's not preclusive, pre- prelusive if you hear about it because you're in a community and, and as an impartial judge, you might hear that the high school principal's a bad guy, you might hear that this person had, you might read about the meth lab. The question for you is, can you set that aside and make your decision based upon the information presented? And there's an, so that's what conflict, you, the fundamental conflict rules deal with financial benefit and that's where it's clear. If you were, your immediate family stands to benefit from a certain thing, you have a conflict of interest. But more generally, it's really something that you have to look inside your own thought process and say, can I make this decision impartially? And if you can, you have every right to just, you know, sit on the hearing and make a decision subject to another consideration. And the other consideration is appearance of conflict. My brother is up for, I'm on the Madison Board of Ed and my brother is recommended as the new director of maintenance and I don't even like the guy. And I am absolutely sure that I can look at those candidates and pick the best one, but the appearance of conflict is such that if I sit and vote on that, I'm going to bring discredit to the Board of Education. So we, we worry about conflicts. We had one case where the mom, the board member was the mom of the boy, of the girl who the student recommended for expulsion had broken up with. And so she was very mature about it. She said, I, I know I have a conflict, I can't, it's a judgment, but can I come watch? What do you think? You know intuitively she can't come watch, but you know why legally you can't come watch? She can't come watch. Legally, and, and one of the important responsibilities board members have is for maintaining confidence. You receive confidential information in your, in the discharge of your duties and the, there's a federal statute, FERPA, the Federal Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, that says that personally identifiable student information is confidential and may not be disclosed. Within FERPA, there's a concept of school official and disclosure of confidential information to a school official is permissible because, and what's a school, who's a school official? I'm a school official, everyone here is a school official, depending upon our, our roles. I'm a school official, everyone here is a school official, depending upon our, our roles, when we need the information to do our jobs. And so when you don't need the information as a board member, because you're not sitting on that expulsion panel, then FERPA says you can't receive that information. And FERPA also says, when you do need the information to do your job, it's a privileged disclosure that is limited to you, and you can only share that information with other school officials who need the information to do their job, as, as interesting as some of these circumstances can be. Where, you know, it's like, you're at a cocktail party and all, let me tell you, wrong, you can't do that because of the, of FERPA, but, so that mom didn't need, that mom's like board member, didn't need any information to do her job, it was, would have been totally inappropriate. Similarly, my wife was a teacher for many years, she retired recently, and our daughter dated a bunch of losers over the years, and she's married to a wonderful, wonderful, that's a whole separate story. But, but she could have easily gone in and like looked, oh my God, this guy's, you know, and she couldn't because she didn't have an educational responsibility. To put a more positive spin on it, how about a coach? Can a coach go into the students' academic records?
No.
I think Galen has nailed it. It depends.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because if I'm the coach, and I want to make sure a kid's eligible, I want to make sure the kid's not risking eligibility, I want to mentor that student as, in my role as a coach, and I want to get into the details, what is that kid taking, how is he doing? There's many benign circumstances where I would have, as a coach, the right to receive that student information. So, I'm sort of going, this is sort of free form, if you don't, we can cover everything, I'm sure. Back to my brother. I have this conflict that we've agreed, okay, so I'm not going to vote. But at least, at least, and in this circumstance, it's my brother-in-law, I like him, at least I can, like, give you a little parting shot, right? Okay, he's my brother-in-law, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote, but I just want you to know. He's terrific. At Thanksgiving, the oven went out, we were, thought we were not going to eat, he just rolled up his sleeves, he fixed the oven, Thanksgiving dinner was a big success, but I'm not going to vote. So what's wrong with that?
You're tainting my, leading the witness.
Well, it goes to what, how you make decisions as a board. As a Board of Education, you're a deliberative body. That means that you make your decisions through deliberations. And so those deliberations are part of the decision-making process. There was an interesting case where a teacher on, in the quasi-judicial responsibility, the board's deciding whether a teacher should be fired, and they're talking, and the teacher ended up getting fired. And then the teacher realized that one of the board members was law partners with someone else who was in this big dispute with that particular teacher, and she cried foul, conflict of interest, and the school district defended and said, okay, throw his vote out, it was nine oh, now it's eight oh. End of story, everything's fine. And the court said, no, because we don't know what influence that one board member had in the deliberations, which is part of the process. So if you abstain, you can't be involved in the discussions. But whether you abstain is a decision for you to make, except in the circumstances of personal financial benefit, which, you know, can actually get you in trouble.
What does abstention mean, when you abstain from a vote?
What, well mechanically, your vote is not counted. A related question is, okay, it's a snowy evening, and we have five board members here, that's a quorum here, right?
Yes.
So, I abstain, now do we have a quorum?
Yeah, we still have one.
Yeah, the quorum, the quorum is the group necessary for the body to take action, but you don't need five votes on any particular matter, and in fact, if you had five people here and you had two abstentions, you could actually pass, take action by two to one vote.
And if someone's on the phone, that vote, they can still vote, right?
Well, electronic participation, and maybe we'll, I know-
Sorry, can I give you a-
No, 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 this is perfect, it's perfect, because we want to also talk about electronic communication and email, and what's a meeting and what's not. I'm just trying to think if we've covered the deliberations piece enough, and I, I know I'm talking a lot and talking fast, so please interrupt and ask questions as we're going along. But, but getting to the, what's, a person, the, since its inception in nineteen seventy five, the Freedom of Information Law has permitted electronic participation in meetings. What that meant in nineteen seventy five was a conference call. And now we have Skype and email, and email's a whole separate animal, but you have a policy judgment to make, whether and under what circumstances you permit electronic participation, but it's not a legal question because it's clearly authorized in the statute. And I don't know if you have a policy or a practice with regard to, I'm out of town, but it's an important vote?
You have a policy. Yeah, you can participate electronically.
Yeah, and a key element of that policy, I'm sure, is that if you're going to participate, you can't just, like, tell me when you're voting, because I'm at a baseball game and, you know, but rather you have to be there electronically for the entire discussion, because you're a deliberative body, and that's how you make decisions, through those deliberations. So that's fine. Where we have now, through technology, created a real issue, is through email. And the second sheet here is caution on email, and, and I don't think I can ever overdo the caution on email, because it's just, we all make these mistakes with some regularity. There are three different things going on here. First, email. Is it a public record? If your neighbor writes to you and complains about a teacher, is that a public record? It doesn't go to a quorum of the board. In fact, you didn't even ask for it. If you're FOI, do you have to give that email from your friend? Has the board chair in West Hartford learned to her chagrin? I don't know if you, that was a big thing in the paper. Talking dismissively with her friend over email about someone who was in opposition to early start, starting times? It was, I'm just telling you what's in the paper.
Sure.
I wasn't involved. And so, the first paragraph of this caution defines what a public record is, and it's any recorded data relating to the conduct of the public's business, prepared, owned, used, received, or retained by public agency. So, who's the public agency in this room? How many public agencies do we have in this room?
One.
What's your, what's your fallback? You know the boards of public agency.
The boards of public agency.
What about Tom?
Yes.
He's separate.
Is he a public agency?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you a public agency?
The board acts as one, but I guess I am a public, I'm an agent.
The, and it's, it's a little counterintuitive, because it's so important that you point out that the board acts as one, and as an individual board member, you have no authority. You're, you have responsibility for millions and millions of dollars in the fate of the Madison youth, in your hands, right here, but only as a board. An individual board member has no authority. But the Freedom of Information Law defines a public agency as a public official. So either you're an agent, the board is an agency created by statute, but each of your public officials, Tom's a public official. I had a case in, at the Freedom of Information Commission, where it was the assistant superintendent who created a committee, and the assistant superintendent was found to have been a public official. And so her committees were public agencies, because as you know, that a committee created by a public agency is itself a public agency. So, the records that each of you create in your role as a board member, and the italicized phrase, relating to the conduct of the public business. So this isn't like open season on your email, just because you're a public official, but if the email or other communication relates to the business of the Madison Public Schools, even if it's uninvited, someone sends you an email, then, and then you respond or not, those are all public records. Yes?
Does this apply to personal emails when you're not, when you're discussing board business, but you are not acting, on the, when you're not meeting with the board? In other words, I received an email from my neighbor saying, you know, what about the chemistry teacher?
Dear president.
What about what?
What about the chemistry teacher?
Oh, yeah.
Or, you know, or I think you should vote this way, or whatever.
Sure.
Right? Would that be, that's related to the conduct of the public's business-
Yeah.
-but I'm not acting as a public agent in my personal life, nor as a prepared-
The commit, the Freedom of Information Commission would find itself incapable of separating your response, your, you are a member of the Madison Board of Education, it relates to the, the conduct of the public's business, and so anything related to the Madison Public Schools, that you, any record you create will be deemed a public record. Now, there are exemptions, but they're applied sparingly, so it's just important to recognize that. And, and it's also, I appreciate your question, because it's not the source, it's not how you create the record, you can buy your own notebook, and buy your own pen, and write, and, or have your own computer and type, and it's irrelevant. It's a record that was created relating to the public's business that's now in your possession, whether you created it or not. So, I know in your mind, you're saying, well, what about texts?
I was just going to ask.
And, the analysis is identical.
The impeachment ranks, there were texts everywhere.
And one, and one circumstance was the superintendent was in a meeting, and they, this guy was talking, and he was going on, but he was like representing the grant tour for like a million dollar grant, and, but the superintendent was bored, so he is texting his assistant, this guy's a gas bag, I wish I had a Chardonnay. And, no, it was, it was unwise.
Always have to stop.
It was unwise. And the reporter says, what are you doing? I want those texts. And under the Freedom of Information Law, he had to cough up those texts. Now, another related question is record retention, because as, this is why, for example, you as an E, as a member of the board, want to do all of your board business on the district server, because email is funny, there are three categories, transitory, semi-permanent, and permanent, and transitory is, hey, meet me at the restaurant. What's semi, what, what's semi-permanent is like, what's correspondence, like, I write a lot of emails, and although they're privileged, attorney-client communications, nonetheless, they're public records, and they have to be retained for at least two years, because they're the functional equivalent of correspondence. Now, the last thing you want, given the fact you get zero compensation for this important responsibility, is to assume responsibility for going through your email and figuring out what's transitory and what's semi-permanent and this and that. So, in fact, because email was not in the, anyone's imagination when the Freedom of Information Law was created, the law has evolved, and it's sort of an interesting circumstance. It used to be, I want to see the invoices for the gas, view the district purchases, and someone would have to go and, you know, go through the paper and find the responsive records, and then we could charge twenty-five cents a page for copies. But with electronic communication, it's, it's, we've, no one's going to go through, I, I've had FOI requests involve a million emails. And that's not actually that hard to do. And so now, how do we search in a million emails? Well, the commission has agreed essentially, that no one's going to have to read a million emails. So now what's evolved in the law is search terms. And, you know, what is a diligent search? A diligent search would be appropriate search terms applied to a database, and, and from there we respond to FOI requests. But the last thing you want to do as board members is be involved in that. So you want to do your board business on the district server, you get an FOI request, and you say, Tom, I got an FOI request. And Tom goes to the IT guy and says, Joe, deal with it. And then on FOI requests, there's a lot of interaction with the requester, you know, and so it's not just mechanical, you say, well, what are you looking for, and you try and negotiate, but that's why. So back to texts, texts are generally transitory, but as long, even transitory records are subject to disclosure until they're deleted. And it's almost become a philosophical question, can you delete electronic information? You know, because you delete it, but it's really there, and, and so where that all falls out in texts, I don't know. But texts, texting invites a further discussion, and that is, that you're at a board meeting, and Emily's phone goes, just, and Emily? I say, vote no. Stop texting me.
That's what you should be saying.
Is that, is that a FOI violation, and if so, why?
FOI violation?
Yeah, isn't that interesting? Let me give you an analogy, because we have no text cases yet, but we have a great case out of Brookfield, where it was a zoning board, and they were hauled before the commission, and examination, I think it was cross-examination, said, yeah, okay, I whispered. I didn't want them to hear, so I whispered. During a public meeting. And that was held to be an FOI violation, because you're in a public meeting, and if board members can communicate pri, or agency members can communicate privately, then people are denied access to the public meeting. Isn't that interesting?
Yeah.
So, so the analogy clearly to texting is very strong, and so if board members receive texts or send texts during meetings, not only have you this issue that you've created public records, but you have this further question, whether you are doing board business surreptitiously during the meeting. Now, interestingly, if I write, I'm on the board, and I write, oh my God, I don't know if this meeting will ever end, please pick up the milk. That doesn't relate to the public business, you know, that's just so, that's personal, and so that's not subject to public disclosure. But there are stories where board members, and, and someone in the audience, you know, and that's illegal, so it's something to keep in mind. So you have the public record aspect as well. So you, on the, the other piece of this is, when does email become a meeting? So you, on the, the other piece of this is when does email become a meeting? And a meeting is defined, and that's in the middle of this page, is communication by or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter within your jurisdiction. And so what's happened is the commission has struggled with this for now almost 20 years since email became common. If Tom sends out either in hard copy or electronically, the board packet, that's a communication to a quorum of the board, but it becomes a meeting. It isn't a meeting and such communication isn't a meeting until it's a discussion or action. And so how do we define discussion? And I've looked it up and it's not much help, you know, exchange of information. So at what point does an email, I say, I think we should have German at the high school and, to the board. And Katie writes back, we don't have the money. Reply all. Is that a discussion?
Yeah.
And I say, well, we can find the money. Is that a discussion? And the commission struggled drawing the line. When is that a discussion? And they gave up after two years of trying to provide clarity and just say, we're, we'll decide these cases on a case-by-case basis. But you're at, you reply all at your peril. And if you could, like, take that button out--
Yeah.
Good, because if one board member talks to two other board members, that's fine in terms of meetings. Of course, you have to remember you're still creating public records, but it's not gonna be a meeting until it's a, a communication among a quorum. Yes, Katie?
If one board member responds to that--
Yes.
--original statement email, that's not a meeting. So--
Oh, you say that with such certainty?
I don't. Actually, I should have been a large question mark because it makes me very nervous when you say, oh. So, so for example, today I sent communication--
I lost a case like that.
Did you?
Yeah. Where one board member wrote to the board and the board chair responded, nobody else said boo. And the board member wrote back, no one else said boo.
Were they CC?
But they were all on the email.
But with, they weren't?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so for example, the--
Oh, oh, I get it. Go, please clarify.
No, no, yeah, so, so I send an email to the board and Kathy responds to me with a question, a follow-up question, but only to me.
No problem.
Okay.
No, that's no problem at all with the understanding that's a public record, but--
Right.
Yeah, you're, but where you can get a little murky is you have two board members talking and, you know, this is a big issue. We should figure this out. You talk to these board members and you, I'll talk to these board members and we'll see how this is gonna go. Now, at that point, the commission would likely rule that to be what they call a serioata meeting, a meeting in series where you're coordinating communication among a quorum of the board. And in those circumstances, it would be a meeting. I just want, I did want to talk a little bit about social media because it's a, it's a challenge.
And it's not going anywhere.
I'm sorry?
And it's not going anywhere. It seems to be more and more prevalent in terms of how the community gets their information.
Yes. So what are the advantages? Like, well, do each of you have your own Madison Public Schools webpage, member, Madison Board of Ed webpage?
No. We do not have a Madison Board of Ed webpage.
No.
We have a Madison Public Schools--
If I'm a board member, can I create a Facebook page, Tom Mooney, Member, Madison Board of Ed, snazzy graphics? Tell me what your concerns are.
No.
It depends.
It depends.
Well, actually--
Cheater.
With, with limited exceptions, absolutely I can do that. And there's a fundamental question between, fundamental difference, I should say, between what we can do and what we should do. And so, but I haven't been elected to anything since eighth grade, so you have to decide as the elected members of the Board of Education, what is appropriate. But there are some, some dangers. What if on my Facebook page, I allow comments? And what if four of you, 'cause it's a, let's get, you know, exciting is going on. So we all wanna show we're with it. What if four of you comment? Is that a discussion among a quorum of the board? So have we, on my face page, have we, Facebook page, have we, like, create, had a little public meeting? So that's a, an issue that you have to be concerned about. Another issue is back to your point about working, I guess, we work as a board. And we didn't talk too much about parent complaints, but, you know, it's real clear. We're, given your service orientation, when a parent comes to you and says, you know, I haven't gotten homework back and like, since the beginning of, my kid in fourth grade has not gotten her homework back and this teacher, I don't know what her problem is, but can you help me? You know, our, our first impulse is, oh, really? Well, I mean, let me look into that. And of course, we can't do that because you're not authorized and it's just a really inappropriate action as a board member. But they ask you in good faith. You know, people don't come to you thinking that they're asking you to do something that's not appropriate. They come to you because you're a member of the Board of Education. So educating the public in terms of your proper role and responsibility and what the chain of command is, is, is a critical part of that.
And liberating.
I'm sorry?
And liberating.
Yes. But when you get into Facebook or, and I feel so old, I keep talking about Facebook like it's a thing. What, what would you, is it--
It's Face20.
Is it Tik, oh, it's still, it's not TikTok?
Only for Goers. Yeah.
Everybody here is good enough, it's Facebook.
Okay, Facebook. So we'll, we'll stay with, that's good. So, so back to the parent complaint piece, you know, people don't understand, you have to help them understand that you have a very limited function. You have a judicial function, you have a legislative function, Tom's the executive. But if you're on Facebook with your pronouncements as to what the board should do, what the board will do, how likely is it that you're, that the public is going to be confused or misled that you're speaking for the board? Again, I, I come to this with caution. I don't want to overstate because these are practical issues. I hope really, I'm just trying to provoke some reflection and comment from you, but those, those are the concern, the one last legal issue and then, and that is, in some cases, there are even First Amendment issues. And there was this really interesting case, Trump is involved in some of these cases 'cause he'll cut people off his Twitter, but it's his bully pulpit, you know? And, but the county supervisor in Ladan County, I think it's Virginia, Ladan County, where it's down there, Maryland, Virginia, Delaware.
I was a German major too, I don't--
So she had a, she had a Facebook page and her assistant maintained it, but it was, you know, constituent service. And so someone got on and said some pretty nasty things. And so understandably, she blocked him. So he couldn't do that. And 36 hours later, she calmed down and she unblocked it, but it didn't prevent her from being the subject of federal court litigation because the construct is she had created a public forum. And you can't, when, just you know from public comment, when you create a public forum, even though you don't have to, once you've created a public forum, you have to take commentary good and bad. You can't, it's called viewpoint discrimination or censorship. If, if you give the person who's saying nice things five minutes and the person who's being critical two minutes, you know, you have to treat people the same way. And when that public official blocked that person because of his comments, it was viewed as censorship. And the judge had probably said, you know, it's hard, it's a 40-page decision. So I can't imagine how much lawyer bills went into that. But, you know, he felt, he said, you know, is this a deprivation of constitutional significance to be unable to say nasty things for 36 hours? But he said, it is. It's a constitutional issue. So that's the last legal piece. The more typical concern is how does that fit with your role as a member of a body? And I'm, I didn't mean to--
No, I, I just, I was telling Tom yesterday, the snow day, there was, you know, a conversation on Facebook going on about, are we gonna have a snow day? As a mom, I had my mom hat on, I was like, oh, I hope there is. And I almost hit send and then I was like, people are gonna read that and think I know something and I don't know anything.
Right.
And--
Or, or that you're influencing the superintendent.
Or that I'm influencing, right.
Or that now there's trouble in paradise because there, you say, oh, I hope there's a snow day and there's no snow day. Hmm.
Right.
Now.
Right.
That's, that's interesting because one thing Katie and I had talked about with social media is that my experience with social media is besides just, boy, you're on Twitter and occasional tweet, is with Facebook, it's getting screenshots sent to me. Do you know about this? Have you seen this conversation? And I'm not on Facebook at all, so I don't even know how it works. But we talked about the community Facebook pages that are pretty active. So I have to give you an example, I guess, without a community Facebook page with comments?
I think it was, yeah.
Okay. So when a board member, I guess it gets to the, you mentioned can and should, which how many times Katie hears me say, it's a question of can or it's a question of should? Maybe you can do it, should you do it?
Right.
If board members respond to that community page, what happens the next time something is posted and there's no response? You're sending a message by not responding, that you agree or disagree.
Right.
So it's, to me, it's an either or. Either we're gonna say, just respond, go ahead, or, or not, because you communicate something with the intermittent responses. So within the realm of social media, what is the can and should line?
Well, the can is very, very broad because board members don't lose their right to free speech even when such speech, and just a simple example, you take a budget vote, you're on the losing end. You know, how does that help the district when you're on Facebook saying, those idiots, you know? So, so, but is that legal? Absolutely. Is it bad? Absolutely. So the can, it's really the should and how you want. And, and one of the most difficult issues in, that I've been observer of, not involved with, but just as I've talked to boards about this, is whether it's possible to develop a common understanding and approach. Because boards often have diverse opinions, board members have diverse opinions, and if everyone has the same understanding that these are the rules of the game, then you're, it's gonna be less problematic. But it's when some board members say, that's not appropriate, you shouldn't be doing that. And the board, the other board member says, this is my right, this is, these are my peeps. I'm gonna, you know, communicate with them. So I don't know whether it's possible to develop kind of the rules of engagement collectively.
It's so, and it's so different from day to day. There was a situation recently where I responded to something with just the link. There was a question about the, our renewal plan, the facility's renewal plan, and I just put the link to our website. I'm thinking, it's innocuous, it's factual, we wrote it on it, it's what it is. And then the follow-up questions came and then I didn't respond to those because I felt like I needed to be speaking for the board as a whole. And then you get down the rabbit hole of, oh, now she didn't respond or--
Right.
She's afraid of the question or, you know, whatever. So it, I don't know a way to do it that represents us as a body.
It's a, it's a challenge, but--
Is it, I'm sorry, but is it more of a board norm that's established among the nine board members?
That's what I'm raising as a possibility and I don't know. You seem to be a particularly nice group. So it's a, I have more hope here than in some other district. But that is, that's a great word, norm. What are our norms, you know, in terms of communicating on, on social media? But it isn't really a legal issue until you get into defamation. Or the other legal issue is with regard to any kind of referendum, whether to budget or project. You have to be very careful. Yeah, you're probably all aware of that, but--
It'd be good to, since we're coming up against that, we have a lot of new board members since our last referendum.
There's a very strict law prohibiting the, authorizing the expenditure of public funds to advocate a referendum result. And the quiet period, some people call it, is when the referendum is set. And you may know by charter what the date is, but you don't set the referendum until you know what the question is. Once the question has been adopted, typically it would be your board's likement?
Yes, our board's likement.
Yeah. So, so as soon as that, the referendum is set, then until the vote occurs, no one can authorize the expenditure of public funds. And, and the expenditure of public funds has been defined very broadly to mean in-kind services. Oh, well, let my, my group come into the school and like, we'll just use the phones and have a phone bank. Nope, you can't. We'll just send something home with the kids. Nope, you can't. If it advocates a result.
But advocating, using speech is okay?
You, you, well, thank you for the question. You all retain your right to advocate as individuals. You all retain your right to spend your own money. And there's certain limits. At some point, you have to have, be in a PAC, political action group and committee and file papers. But you absolutely have the right of any other citizen to promote a result. You just can't use public funds. And it gets into some nitty-gritty. As you're approaching a project, you may have all this, why is this a good idea? And it's on your website and it actually costs you money to take it off your website, but you have to take it off your website.
Sure.
And the kicker is, why is this such a strict law? You, and this is especially important for new board members, the general rule is that you are doing God's work and if you're ever sued, you are fully protected by the indemnification statute. There's a significant public policy to protect board members and school officials from any kind of liability at all. And so you should be comfortable knowing that you're protected. When you violate this law, it expressly says you're not indemnified and you can be fined up to twice the value of the expenditure. And it's a personal liability. So when I give advice on the subject, I'm very conservative.
So in terms of your rights as a private citizen and your ability to voice an opinion, wouldn't the ethical or the right line be, you can only act or say things that are in the public domain? There was obviously, if the public, if, if you wouldn't, you couldn't advocate for something that is not publicly available, right? In terms of--
Right. If there were a confidential discussion or attorney-client letter--
Right.
No, that's off limits. But if, if the information is available to the public, you're free to--
Right. But if it were draft form, you shouldn't be able to talk about that, obviously.
A draft?
Yeah. Like something where draft.
If the draft was available.
Yeah, if it were, but it's not, I mean, my, you know, guideline would be--
I mean, my, you know, guideline would be, if it's available publicly, then I can comment on it.
Right.
If it's not, then I shouldn't.
That makes good sense.
But if I wanted to put up a poster at the surf club that I made at home?
Yes.
About the school referendum?
Yes. That's between you and the surf club. But it doesn't implicate your public responsibilities.
So we have, well, I'll go back to last time. Back in September 2017, we had a referendum in September to build in a school. In June, the referendum question and date was set. Does that quiet period clock start ticking then, from June till September?
Was the question framed at that point, too?
Yes.
In other words, what are we voting on?
Board of selectmen took action to name the referendum date and the question.
Yeah, well, that seems like a long time, but if the referendum question has been then, the term in the statute is pending, is the referendum pending? And it's not pending until the question has been defined and the date has been scheduled. But if it's that long, it's that long. It's still pending, so you have to be careful. And there's just a little wrinkle to, it used to be that we could send out emails to parents just to say, vote.
Right.
FYI, is it?
Yep.
Right. And now you know that the law was changed, it has to go through a community system and through the board of selectmen, and then it goes to everybody. Because the thought was that if you just write to parents and remind them to vote, that's unfair.
Follow up to my poster at the surf club?
Yes.
What if we all signed it, the whole board?
No problem.
It's still not a problem?
Yeah. Although, I'll just say, and you, did you see the gears turning? There have been circumstances where board members have written a letter.
We did that for the last referendum, can't do that?
Well, how did you all write that letter? Was that communication among a former board of education?
I'm sure it was at a public board meeting.
I wonder if it was a fascinating metaphysical experiment? All in different locations magically.
I'll just pose it as a question.
It's an excellent question.
Right, right.
I never knew what you were talking about.
You weren't a parent, were you?
I don't want to...
You would've said it anyway.
All of us, all nine of us, I think.
Well, if you were, if you were posting something, say, on Facebook?
Yes.
And you, could you preface it by saying, I'm not saying this as a board member, I'm saying this as a mother of a student, and then whatever your opinion is?
Of course.
And then that would not be an issue?
Well, now you're pushing it.
[laughing]
Whether it's an issue or not, I guess we have to go back to, it depends. But certainly to disavow and to clarify that you're not speaking on behalf of the board, there's no downside to that, is what you say next, which is just, you know, but at least no one will accuse you of representing this as the board's opinion.
It depends on what is said, though.
Right, right.
Particularly if it's about the schools, because you are a public agent.
Yeah.
So, so you are seen as having...
I'm not speaking for the board, but I, I think we should get rid of Joe Blow. Obviously, that's a problem.
That's an issue.
Or, I'm not speaking for the board, but...
I don't like this curriculum.
The mold in this school is making our kids sick.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
You're a board member. So, you're seeing...
I'm not speaking for the board.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, so, it depends. There are certainly very appropriate and benign things that you can say and disclaim that you're saying them on behalf of the board. But the good news and the bad news is that you were elected to the Board of Education, and people will always see you in that role, as a member of the board. Now, I don't want to overstay my welcome, obviously, we could talk longer, but I know that I've gone over my time.
So essentially, no talking, texting, emailing?
Just live in a cocoon, a cocoon in between board meetings. Come out of the cocoon, come to the board meeting, and you'll be fine.
So, but I don't have a Facebook page.
For the, really for the purposes of Kathy and Diane, I think for all of us, too. Katie and I have discussions, we meet regularly, and there's different topics that come up. And the expression Katie may say is, can you arm the board with information about X? To which I always say, good superintendent, please send them to me, or send them to the principal, or send them to so-and-so. Because I always fear the follow-ups after that. If I give you information for that question, what are you gonna do? Like, your, your social media example with the three and four follow-up questions, you're gonna come back to me and just let me talk to them?
Right.
But, what is an approach that you would recommend for board members? Because, action items, if they take action, they better know.
Right.
Why is there action? Policy, okay? Those are things that are all under the board purview, but if, you know, why do you teach the inquiry approach in science? Why don't you just teach them to memorize facts? Why do you do cluster stocks in transportation? Why don't we go door-to-door? Why do kids not lose recess as a consequence they get, too? Like, these are legitimate questions.
Right, yeah.
A community member could ask any board member. And I can answer all those questions, our principals can. So, how do you balance that out?
Stop and shop questions?
Yeah, I think that's...
No, those are really challenging questions. I think there are some simple rules, and then everything else is a judgment call. The simple rule is, is that you should have a protocol, that, the protocol should somehow address the risk that it's gonna be open season on the superintendent. And I wrote a column many years ago now called Working for Nine Bosses. You know, and, so, you know, it just, you have to be sensitive to the, so, if and when it becomes an issue, I'm not saying just like, start out by creating, you know, calling it an issue, but there, I, request for information should go through the chair, unless they're very simple, so that there's a clearinghouse, and at least someone's, and so that can be a discussion. Board members are not naturally unreasonable. But you don't know that three other people asked for something else. So, that's the first part of the clear protocol. I think that there should be some sort of oversight. And, and potentially even negotiation. As a lawyer, I get questions. And some questions would make an excellent law review article. And I would so enjoy writing a law review article and sending a big bill. But I can't. So there's a certain give and take, you know, about, well, how can I give you what you need without giving you more than you need? So, so that's all part of the protocol on the front end. The back-end protocol is, it, you're, because you're all members of a deliberative body, and you should all have the same information. So, when a board member requests information, unless it's just very basic, then that information should be then disseminated back to all the board members, so that you're all on an even playing field. And, other than that, these discussions about, well, do you really need to know that? Because I actually have a job to do here, running a school district. So, so that, those are judgment calls. But the protocols on the front and the back end are important.
Yeah, I, I think we're pretty good at, at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Katie did a great job, you know, doing the clearinghouse piece there. But I'm thinking, all of a sudden Kathy's neighbors now, wait a minute, you're in the Kathy mill, but that was on the sign. You're on the board of ed. You know, or Diane, now suddenly you're on the board of ed, so...
And it can be a helpless feeling that you, that you walk in a stop and shop, and somebody says, I gotta talk to you about this policy. The, the most recent one was the non-resident tuition policy, right? That we passed. And, how are you guys gonna handle the application process?
So I didn't say to that, though, I think you passed a policy, I, yeah, I think you can defer to me, but I do feel a responsibility for board members to know what you voted for.
Right. Oh, that, the policy, for sure.
But there's so many...
It's the nuances.
Well, then you get to the operational piece. So you adopted that policy, now the operational piece then comes to my office. I think for board members, it's very unsatisfying when you don't have an answer. So, you used a line when we met in July.
Yes, my favorite, I say it all the time.
You've mistaken me for someone who's important.
Yes.
Who has the power.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, I...
A certain humility is helpful.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'll just pick on transportation, because, well, you know, fortunately, our transportation director did a great job screening, but we have cluster stops, and it changes at a different level. So suddenly I was getting picked up at my door, now I'm not. So, a board member may get that, it's an operational thing. It's truly within, you know, unless it's a written policy, but it's within my purview. Maybe that's a bad example, I don't know, but just stick with it. Well, why do we do that? What do I tell this person? And, you know, my response would be, send them to me, I'll send them to art, but I think it's an unsatisfying feeling, I've heard from board members. So, your recommendation for them to, how to handle that, I think would be helpful.
Is this where I say something?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
I was just gonna say something.
A little humility is helpful, I think.
Well, that's the liberating part I was talking about.
Yeah.
You gave us that nugget, and now to be able to say, that is an operational issue. We are governors, we do governance, but we do not do the oper, we're not in charge of operational...
And I think if I can, I think for, there's the authority question. But there's also, if somebody's asking me something, even if I think I can give them a response, I always ask myself, am I in the, am I the best person? Am I in the best position to give them the best answer? Nine times out of 10, I'm not, and it's somebody else. So I can always say, well, listen, you know, I can have an opinion about it, but I think the best person to ask about is, and then send them on. I think you ask yourself that question, you can probably get that, I'd say. That's not unsatisf, I, I get what you're saying. But it's not, it would be unsatisfying for me to kind of wing it. And then I go back home and say, actually, I'm not sure that's what Tom would've wanted me to say, because I might be wrong. Got you.
Well, again, I don't want to overstay my welcome, any other questions?
So many questions. You'll have to come back.
Well, it'll be my pleasure, but congratulations to the new board members, and it's nice to see everyone, and I hope it was a good discussion, and look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna walk Tom out, but before I do, I have one other matter. I think everyone, well, not Kathy and Diane wouldn't know this. We made a commitment to try to do our best to keep promoting the district in a positive way. Partnership with the local realtors is a part of that. Zoe Roos and I, the communications members, are meeting with the local realtors over the next month or so. And we have designed these lovely little brochures that they will keep in their offices. They'd ask for a handout, a one-way handout. So I'll just pass these out for board members to see. Yep. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good, that nice new playground.
And I will, and I will update board members on how that communication strategy is working and so forth.
Super.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
I think that's my summary.
Um, so we are at item six, board member comments. I really like this postcard.
Yeah.
I think it's great. And if any, if you haven't had the opportunity to check out the website lately, the drone footage is...
I have something.
Super cool and really exciting to see.
A student did that.
Um, yeah, it's really, comes right at you when you get on the homepage. So if you haven't had the moment, check it out. It's really cool. Rita and Zoe did an amazing job of that. Well, I'm sure you all did. It's really engaging. So we're gonna move on to committee reports, curriculum, and student development.
Okay. Curriculum committee met on November 19th. By goodness, it's December. All right. We covered four items. The upcoming tri-state social-emotional learning meeting, which will take place if we may fit to the schedule. There's quite a bit of preparation involved. There's a great deal of parental input. Gail, please correct me if I'm wrong, I need you, Gail, to help me out.
Doing great.
Yeah. So that was, that's well in the planning stages. The second item that we covered was tracking the fall EZCPM system. We were, Gail and the team walked us through some reports. We compared it to our existing tracking. Teachers are continuing to pilot that for the first time this fall, is that correct?
Yeah, they've administered it in the fall, they'll be re-administering it later. I'm sorry, what is that?
Oh, the E, well, I will defer to the expert.
It's a universal screening tool that we tried for the first time this year. And it takes a temperature of mathematics and ELA for all students. And so it's an assessment that we give all kids that enables us to target what students might flag for needing intervention. And then we do further probes and decide whether or not those students qualify for intervention services in ELA.
What's the name of that?
EZCPM.
And that's on the state menu, too. That was, it's, so it's new to the district this year, right?
Yeah. It's grades K through eight. That's administered all the way up through.
And so the reports, were they, were they, was there any information in them that was...
We did value our own assessments as well, because they went a little bit deeper and provided a little bit more information. But I certainly have copies.
So is it a standardized test, sort of?
No. It's a standardized screening assessment.
It's like a tracker, it'll say, you know, 17% of these students are in this category for, for this kind of, this, for this phonics or for word recognition.
Reading comprehension.
Reading comprehension. And...
Basic mathematics.
Right. So it's, it's not the test itself, but it's tracking, it's tracking our students' progress.
Based on what data, though? Like, where's the data coming from?
The students go on to a website, and they log on, and they take the administration of the assessment, and that's where the data is generated. And then parents are provided at conferences with their students' data, so they can see whether or not the student flagged.
And has it been done in all the grades this year?
K through eight.
K through eight.
This is the first year that we are doing it.
Yeah. Totally normal, K through eight.
Right. I will say that the existing tracking that we have goes into a little more detail. You can, you can fine-tune. So that was, and we have material for each of the items. The third item on the agenda was the monitoring of progress of the accountability index. And there was some good progress in the growth.
There's some preliminary data that the state put out for the accountability index. All of the data sets are not in yet. So it does give some idea of where those indicators are. So, I don't have copies of all of that, but we do have the tri-state as well. I'll work on these over...
Oh, thank you, yeah. And, lastly, we discussed the poll-based mastery, some of the upcoming changes for graduation requirements for the year. Discussed portrait of graduate, there was a, a meeting. Emily, what was it, what was the day of that meeting? It was like the 20th, 20th, the 21st?
It was the same day.
Same day, same day. It was the 19th, it was the 19th.
Yeah.
And it was kind of an interactive session, I was there for about an hour and a half.
Yeah, Katie was there as well. So it was stakeholders from around the district. It included elementary teachers and middle school and high school teachers, parents from all levels, students, we had student reps at each table as well, and a couple of board members. And the idea was that we're, we took a look at what the national trends were, some states were requiring, as well as some other local districts were providing in terms of soft skills, in terms of what a portrait of a graduate would include beyond content. So it was a very interactive session. It was definitely all voices heard, so we came up with some changes to the profile, and we'll be following up in the next two weeks with that same stakeholder group.
That's great.
Yeah, it was a very busy session.
It was great. It was very wonderful.
And that's the end of the report.
Thank you, Caitlin, for this, too. Communications, no report. Facilities, no report. Finance?
Uh, yes. Greg was highly critical of my last presentation. And so Stacy was kind enough to put together...
Color.
Wait. This is the fourth. This is six, because it's six in the summer. Stacy was kind enough to put together a new budget calendar. And if you look, you'll see that on December the 10th, we have our first budget workshop that's scheduled to begin at 6:30. It follows the budget retreat meeting conducted by Tom and the administrative council, after which time we will have perhaps not the formal book of the budget presentation.
Need one more copy.
Here, put it in my
Oh, yes. Of the budget? Got it.
All right. In Avent, if she is not able to put together the formal budget book, we'll have enough backup information that we'll be able to have a discussion. On the 17th, the finance committee will meet if necessary. If there is anything based on the discussion on the 10th that the full board wants the finance committee to, on which the full board wants the finance committee to act prior to the second budget workshop, which will be on the same day at 7:30. And then on January the 7th, we can either have a third budget workshop or if we have reached a conclusion that we may in fact take action on the budget. And if not, we'll take action on the final budget on January the 21st.
Couple of updates too. We meet all day tomorrow, the Avent team.
Right.
We'll have leave in the room until we're done with our work. And then on Monday, the central office team will meet and put together the remaining parts after the having retreat tomorrow. We won't have budget books by next Tuesday. The goal was to have them all done by the 17th.
Which is early.
It's about two weeks before we tip. Usually we do it right before the first of the year.
Was that okay?
More copies next time, but it's pretty good.
End of report. Yes, thank you.
Personnel?
No report.
Policy committee.
There we go. We have a lot to talk about tonight. Policy committee did meet before, right before our last board bed meeting. You've already heard that report. And that has yielded two items that you see before you tonight for our first reading. Policy 3542.4, lunch charging, and policy 5120.9, homeless students. First chance to look it over. We haven't received any comments since the last report on the topic. We are working on clarifying one language item at the end of one of those policies that is not substantive, but you might see a slight adjustment next time. So those are in front of you. Nothing, no action will be taken for two more meetings at minimum. So we also met tonight and we have a number of things to discuss primarily about the calendar. I will get the other items out of the way quickly. First, the committee engaged in preliminary discussions on policy 5110.4, which is suspension, expulsion, exclusion from school or school activities. And we also discussed the shipment and goodwill recommendations for the 1,000 series of policies. As we previously described, we are going through all the policies in the book for over a six-year period. And those are the policies that we are reviewing right now. Nothing major described from those two discussions yet, but you will hear much more about those in the near future. The, first I'll talk about the 2019-20 school year. So I will reiterate, this is about this school year. We have, the committee voted tonight to recommend to the board a graduation date for 2020. So that would be June 15th. So again, this year's 2020 graduation date, June 15th, is our recommendation to the board. And we'd ask that the board take that up as an additional motion towards the end of the meeting tonight. Which is a Monday. Thank you. That is a Monday graduation date. Any questions about that? I'll pause there for
Take action on that tonight, is that the plan?
Yes.
Greg, what is the definition of a homeless student?
That I believe is, well, actually, I'm going to step back and say, I'm not the best expert to answer that.
I think there's several that
There's, I believe there's a federal guideline.
Okay.
That's listed.
So if there is a family, all right, so if there's a family living in their car in the town of Madison, might that be considered a homeless student?
It might, but rather than go on the record with it, and it's the first reading, there is a very precise federal definition of it. The purpose of this policy was to talk about unaccompanied youth.
Okay, well, I saw that and that's the reason I asked.
That's the reason, yeah. The legacy language is the definition of homelessness hasn't changed. And I can get that. And I can email it to the whole board. But the unaccompanied youth is what we add.
But homeless children and youths are also specified in this policy. So the definition is probably pertinent. But there are specific guidelines to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Some of those are judgment-based. Any thoughts about the graduation date? All right, you've heard that. Now we will move to the 2020-21 calendar. So that is next year's calendar. I believe that's in the packet. Does everyone have a copy of that handy? Because it's probably useful to have that in front of you. Okay. Can we get a couple more of those? Just because otherwise there's no way we're going to reasonably have a discussion about that. I'll talk about a few general things while you don't have that in front of you yet. Just to give you a sense of the years. We are, we are lucky to have a couple holidays land on the weekend during this year. So we are able to fit a lot more into the actual calendar. So keep that in mind as we go through this. And as a result, the committee has some recommendations about the calendar itself that you might consider one way or the other. Yeah. It all, we, the built into this calendar is 188 teacher days and as printed, 182 student days. But we're suggesting the consideration of adjusting that to 181 student days. Statistically, we only have to have 180 student days. The extra days are a buffer. And yeah, the 188 as you described is contract language. I do have it. Thank you. So now that you have that in front of you, a couple of things to note on the record. The school year itself begins in, as proposed here, prior to the Labor Day holiday. So that is something that has not happened in the last couple of years. But note that Labor Day is on the 7th of September and starting the school year on the 8th of September, a Tuesday. Seems pretty far into the month of September. And so the committee is moving this to you or is suggesting to you that you consider this as written in terms of the start of the year. The, there are a few things that we would like to, we would like you to consider as we move forward to a vote on this topic, also later in the agenda. And I will describe what we discussed as a committee. There are two changes that are suggested in one item to discuss. So the first suggestion is adding March 12th, 2021. So that's Friday, March 12th, 2021, as a day off from school for students and teachers and administration to provide a single day of break in March. You'll notice that at the top in the dark blue, where we list the number of school days in each calendar. So you can see in March 21, there are 23 school days, by far the most number of school days for any month of the year because there is no break that happens for students in the month of March. Given the start and end time that we have right now with an end that occurs pretty early, you'll see in June, the scheduled end time is the 18th for students. I'm sorry. It's June 11th for students, that there is quite a bit of time there in case there are a number of snow days. So that's one thing that we're suggesting that you consider. Connected to that is the idea that we subsequently still end the school year for students on June 11th. Add June 14th, which is a Monday, as a full PD day, which maintains our obligation to have 188 teacher days, even though we have March 12th off. And add June, I'm sorry, that would still yield a 181 school year, 181-day school year for the students. So we'd be meeting all of our requirements. But again, we'd be providing a single day off in March and adding a single PD day on a Monday in June, which we've discussed with the administration. They might comment on, after I say the one last thing, because we would like to hear from them about this as well. There was some discussion about which week in April should contain the April break. So as printed here, it's the 5th through the 9th. It was noted that the regional schedule, which we are not required to adhere to, but might want to consider, is the 12th through the 16th of April. And there are a number of things that the committee considered. But we asked the administration to look at the rest of our area to see what they were doing. So I will turn it over to you to give us more information about that.
Yeah, we have one adopted one locally right now.
Regional school district number 17 does have an adopted calendar and they did move to have the April break, the 12th through the 16th.
No one else is posted yet.
No one else is posted.
When's the graduation date?
They have it as June 8th.
He's up for table.
So, so again, all that's before you and this is for vote and discussion. I think we could discuss it now if you have items that you want to bring up about it. But then we do have to make a motion ultimately about adopting the calendar. And I think preferably in that motion, we would describe the amendments to the calendar as printed, even though that might get cumbersome and wordy. It would be very clear. So are there any thoughts or any committee members that want to jump in about the two things really? The day off in March slash how we compensate for that in June? Or what do we do about April vacation?
How'd you come up with the 12th?
We just picked a Friday and wanted to be far enough away from April vacation, I think. And the March, and the February vacation, somewhere in the middle.
Greg, having a March 12th day.
I wonder, feels like a lot to digest. That makes sense to add this to the next agenda for the board. Like if we do a reading like we did with the, with the policies and just give people a beat to understand it? Or do you guys feel like you're ready to vote on it?
You know, and just in full disclosure, I just said to Katie, we could probably get through phone calls information from where the draft calendars are for other districts if they haven't adopted yet. We found one online, but we could call five, six regional ones and say, oh yeah, this is the one we're going to the board with. If that helps, if the board would like to know where the other districts are for the April break.
Just also in full disclosure, we are a little behind the eight ball compared to when we usually adopt our calendar for the following year. So I think that's probably why the policy committee would like to advance this to a vote. But
We added a meeting tonight. This is not our usual meeting time, just to make sure this got
Do we have one more?
We do have another.
Yeah.
It wouldn't go, it wouldn't go back to policy unless we really wanted to.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be back on the policy agenda. I just think
That we've discussed it.
And it's up to you, but
Nope. We, it's not on the agenda to vote, so we would just do nothing if we want to wait or if we want to get it out. Is there, are there any questions about what we're suggesting before we?
Will you be able to give us that information?
Yeah, so the real homework that we'll do is we'll do the region around here and see who has adopted, that hasn't posted. And who is, has a draft form that they're really confident they're going to post and adopt. And then we can get that information in the board packet for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm curious about that Good Friday, gloving day, then to come back for a weekend and go back, you know, that Easter. So yeah, I'd be interested in that.
I think for your purposes though, Greg, is the only lingering item, people vacation. Or is there a?
I think if we could, if we could see a version of the calendar that
With March 12th?
With the March 12th, June 21st, and the 181 versus 182, that'll be probably clear for people to follow.
If I'm not going to do something?
I think, no, I think just amend it unless anyone's against doing that. We can always change it back, but that would at least give you the two things to look at and compare them. And maybe just leave April or, I think we all understand the April part.
So our Christmas wish will be to have a calendar adapted before
Our holiday.
The holiday
Yes.
Happens.
Other than that, end of report.
Thank you. Learn, Lisa.
I will just present her court from the last LEARN meeting, November 14th. Cave General Counsel gave a legislative update, which included goals of the Advisory Commission of Intergovernmental Relations, which will look into shared services and increasing collaboration among school boards, reviewing healthy school start times, non-medical exemptions for vaccinations, social emotional learning, school climate policy, and special education funding. So it's on the horizon. They also gave updates for LEARN. Their leadership continues to meet with district superintendents to discuss their needs, goals, and how LEARN can assist. They also have a task force, which will be addressing birth to five issues and will be hosting a symposium of early childhood in December called Keep Calm, Keep Learning. Their Director of Innovation and Development continues to work on sub-regional transportation and has coordinated a collaboration with Waterford, East Lime, and Salem regarding a uniform contract to bid together. So they're really focusing on that shared services. And they continue to discuss roundtable topics such as health insurance consortiums, high school start times, and continued discussion about regionalism and sharing services. End of report.
Thank you very much. Audience respond? Sunday, Liz. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2019, Board of Education meeting. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, I need a motion to approve the designation of standing committee membership. Motion?
Second.
Discussion. So I sent these out to everybody. I just want everybody to know I did my very best to keep things static as much as I possibly can. And there was a little bit of movement. So I appreciate everybody that stepped up and is pitching in and for all of your help in advance. All the hard work is going to get done. I just want to remind the chairs of the committees again, after we vote on this tonight, to please get in touch with your committee members to find convenient mutual times to meet so that we can really start moving. It's been, it's been a while, so it is important that we get moving. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the trip to Greece, April 2021. The actual date will be determined. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Full discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a $6,000 donation from the Jeffrey PTO to the Jeffrey Elementary School for field trip expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's going to take steps for a little?
All yours.
I really want to, go ahead.
Go for it.
I can't do set justice.
Do your best.
The gravity.
I'd like to thank the very generous donation to Jeffrey Elementary School.
That's great.
Really helps parents a lot. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve National Philanthropic Trust donation I need a motion to approve National Philanthropic Trust donation of $7,417.
No question. Why is it such?
Wait, no question until we get to discussion. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Why is it an odd number?
It was a number that we gave them for the Bauer Park field trips.
I know, but why isn't it like rounded up, rounded down? So that's what.
They asked for exact price and that's what we gave them.
Is that a question?
Can I just add to the discussion?
Please.
Yeah, so this, this is the most unique donation we've had that I've seen in my time here. Anonymous donors had happened before. This was worded out because an article in the Source about the grant funding drying up for the Bauer Park field trips. We're passionate about those trips, the field studies, Julie Haynesworth and so forth. They do support the curriculum. But we've had to make some hard choices and kind of narrow them over the last couple of years because the grant funding has dried up, especially this year. So it came to us and we haven't contacted the donor. I've never spoken to the donor, no idea who the donor is. We had a representative on behalf of the donor from a local bank contact us. The very unique transaction. So the form is here. I'm handing out the form to you all because we waited and waited and waited, but this is the donation form. I accepted the form essentially. Wendy wrote it up, but wanted to make sure it was official. But this maintains the Bauer Park field studies for this year. And there's an open-ended part that it could be in the future as well, correct?
Yeah, based on what the bank liaison was saying is that, that we'll be doing a survey at the end of the year to see how the field studies went, to get some teacher feedback, and what were the most valuable field studies. And they'll be looking forward to that information, too. And also, so I want to see how the year goes.
Really, we have so much around here between the beaches, between Bauer, and to take advantage of. And it, again, I got to emphasize, it really does fit into what we choose to do and to the curriculum, so.
And it's a treasure of the program. And so it would be a shame to have the kids lose it. So thank you to our anonymous donor.
Why, why, when you requested the form, did they not get it?
It just, there wasn't follow-through. They did all of their appropriate paperwork through this transaction from the bank, the donor to the bank to us. It just was a simple form that we just, we did it. It's our internal document. It's just, yeah, there's a big form about this form. Yeah, I just acknowledge it, it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Future agenda items. Meetings and dates of importance are in your packet. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.